Five thirty.
These boxes are.
Who's in charge of this outfit?
This one. Yeah, sit over there.
Really?
Get away from me.
This is awful. I want these boxes if you guys don't.
It's the last ones, who cares?
Not for me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into your republic for which one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Speak your phone out.
Okay, we get a roll call.
Jenny David, Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Cerber.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present. All right, let me log in here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve our agenda.
Listen, I'm not gonna let you guys rush me.
Hurry.
It's snow. There we go.
I don't wanna get snowed in here with you.
Oh, we're thankful. All right. We have a motion and supporters, little Craig Scott and Mark Sherbrooke.
Actually, Ron Vaughn and then Mark Sherbrooke.
Oh, was it?
Ron made the motion, I second.
I didn't have anything.
Take this other thing out. Can't hear.
Blame me.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The view of the minutes from the December eighth regular meeting. I have a motion to approve those minutes. I would make that. I will support. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
December fifteenth, committee of the whole meeting minutes. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Motion from Mr. Sherbrooke.
Support.
Support from Chris Sherbuck.
They're so quiet tonight.
All right, this brings us to, uh.
Aye.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, you keep it up? They're rushing me.
They're rushing me!
There's a snowstorm going on, you know? All right, this brings us to the first public comment on Agenda Matters Only. Do we have any, uh, public comment from the audience? Richard Wilsey, would you like to speak it out?
I'm all set.
I'm currently speaking at fifty.
Everything okay?
No, I'm kinda dead in the water here, but go ahead, pretty much memorize the agendas.
I'm sure.
Do you wanna come up with a hard copy?
No, here's one now.
We have any public comment from Zoom? Right. Correspondence from Barry Coney, Auto Insurance Reform. I had not had a chance to look at that yet.
That we typically receive and file is, um, pretty similar to the resolutions we've seen from the other counties and very similar to the one we adopted earlier this year.
Yeah. Time to get on board. All right. So do we need to cover action on consent calendar? Or do we wanna put these all together?
Just go down through them.
Yeah, put them all together.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff.
Motion, we put them all together.
All right, I'll read them off.
Follow them.
And then we can vote on them all together.
All right.
Is somebody gonna second it?
I'll support.
Okay. So Resolution A is to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Michigan Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant Contract. Resolution B is to authorize temporary work hour adjustment for the county clerk's office. C is a resolution to approve zoning map amendment. Zero three dash twenty-two. D is resolution to appoint members of Ogumal County Planning Commission. E, resolution to appoint members of Ogumal County Zoning Board of Appeals. F, resolution to appoint members of the Ogumal County Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. G, resolution to accept quote for purchase and installation of a commercial dryer. H, resolution to approve an interlock or inter- interlocal agreement with the West Branch Community Airport Board. Resolution to approve fund transfer. J, one, resolution to appoint an administrative secretary. And K, resolution to approve an agreement for caretaker services at West Branch Secret Campground and RV Park. Do I have a motion? What was the fund transfer?
It's the DHHS transfer to.
Right, yeah. Yeah, okay. Not happy with it, but okay.
Ron and Nick.
All together.
Yeah.
Everything.
Oh, we need a motion to.
But claims.
No. Are you doing claims together with that?
No, no.
So this motion covers all those, we'll need another one for claims.
Right.
When we get there.
Yeah, we'll cover, we'll cover, uh, claims after this one, but, uh, we. I'd make a motion of resolutions to be adapted as read by Commissioner Becker.
We already.
Where you did that?
No, we approved them to, to be both up together.
Have them all.
He was gonna read it and then ask for a vote.
I gotcha.
Yes, just need a vote.
Okay, so. So we don't need.
Tim? Do we need a motion? There's their two separate motions. Can't remember. Last time we only did one motion.
Right, and that's, that's what I assumed that happened after Commissioner Newbecker read them. The motion was to approve them.
So Ron and Cerber, now we just leave your votes.
Have a vote.
Right.
Roll call.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll call those, please, all right.
Mark Cerber.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
All right, we are on to claims, which me and Craig looked at earlier this week.
Yeah.
I did not see a whole lot of anything that was out of the norm in there.
Oh. Oh, let's see, we had, yeah, we're high on family court like usual.
Tell Karen, Indian Council.
Yeah.
We, uh, we equipped two cars, right?
Yeah, two Tahos and a, in the truck, actually.
Yep.
And the van that crashes. Yep, that got a bunch of stuff on it, too.
Do I have a motion for the approval of claims?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I will support it.
What are you telling the total?
Total?
Yeah.
One seventy-five, three seventeen, and forty-two.
Correct.
Okay.
Cause it's in this first.
One ninety-three.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's prepaid, or it's one ninety, one ninety-three, nine thirty, fourteen.
One hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents.
Yes.
Got it.
Roll call.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Mark Sherbrooke.
Yes. All right. Did you get yours working yet?
I did.
Okay. His mind might be going down here pretty quick. Um, unfinished business? Do you have any of that? Nothing? Administrators report.
Uh, other than, uh, say it's employee month. Otherwise businesses used to go in the office, um, because this is the last meeting, though, you wanna just steal everybody's, so very quickly acknowledge Commissioners Newbecker, Vaughn, and Sherbrooke. It's been great working with the three of you. Don't be strangers. You know where I am, and you know Craig sees to it the day of the coffee, and so. Been great working with you.
Thank you. I appreciate, uh, uh, Mark, Ron, it was, uh, great working with you guys. And also, uh, Brock and Jenny, um, and Craig, of course. Save the last, best for last, right?
Yeah, right, right.
Sheriff, thank you, um. I know times haven't been always great, but we got through it and, uh, we're, uh, heading to greater places now. Good luck, Mr. Wilsey. It's not an easy job, uh, but, uh, if you're committed to it, it's, it's satisfying.
Thank you.
Satisfying everyone.
All right, uh, elected officials and.
Most of his wind, I don't know if he had any more to do today or not.
Actually, uh, I, I guess I should give, uh, a little time for Chris Sherbuck and Sherbrooke. Would you, would you guys love to say anything?
I just appreciate the whole board and the way we work together and got things done and, uh, it's, uh, been an easier four years than, uh, what I actually was told it was gonna be, so it's.
But don't listen to those people.
Don't listen to those people. Thank you all, and you folks.
I have thoroughly enjoyed my two years on the board, I'm gonna miss it terribly, I really am. Um, I'm not gonna be a stranger. So I appreciate everything we've been able to accomplish over the last two years. And I hope that once the new board gets seated, that they continue to judicially use ARPA funding and that frivolously. So. I think, Tim, you wanna, when we get back to your administrators report, expound a little bit on the high banks.
Sure, Commissioner Sherbrooke and I had a phone call, and remember that guy's last name was Bacon? Can't think of his first name. Um, but.
Was it Evans?
No. Uh, I think they were, they were, but anyway, we were talking to him, he's a part of a, uh, conservation group out of Lansing about the high banks. He did have, um, uh, was intrigued, was very interested, but he isn't sure if their organization is necessarily the one that would, uh, be most appropriate, uh, to talk to about high banks, and so he will be putting us in contact with probably at least one, but maybe a few other, um, organizations like theirs, uh.
Andy. Andy Bacon.
Bacon, uh, but other organizations that, that probably this is more in their wheelhouse. So that's, this is more progress than we've seen in the last six months on the high banks, and I think very promising, uh, and he did not rule out his organization. Uh, he was gonna go back and talk with the people he works with to gauge their interest, and they may be interested themselves. So, um, overall, I thought it was a very positive call, uh, and then very optimistic that we were gonna make some headway.
Thank you. Commissioner Newbecker was a part of that conversation, too. Yeah, I timed it just right.
Yep, Brad happened to be doing claims and coming at the right time during that phone calls.
Yeah, it did, it did, uh, sound very, uh, interesting, uh, sounds like we might have some, uh, people interested, so. Um, so I guess back to elected officials and department heads reports, Sheriff, you got anything?
Pretty, good evening, gentlemen and madam.
Good evening.
You had, I had scanned it and sent it off to Tim on the successful grant that we got with Inbridge.
Oh.
That was a seventy-five hundred dollar.
Grant the receipt, right?
Yeah, so that's gonna be applied to our Motorola handhelds, so that was. And, um, I got a new deputy that started on the road after graduating Delta Police Academy last Friday. Alex Warner, uh, formerly from, uh, corrections staff over there. He's been an employee for, uh, for us for two years now, so he's a, he's a great asset to us. And then, uh, we had another, uh, new, new deputy hired, uh, a few weeks ago. Just come off of, uh, our training program. Uh, Robert Huckston, you, you had met him.
Yeah.
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 He, he came from Clare County. Worked there for a short period of time, but he retired out of Detroit PD, so he's got, uh, a lot of knowledge, a lot of, a lot of, uh, good mechanical skills.
Very friendly guy.
And very nice.
Very.
Very nice, yep.
Great attitude.
Meeting as well.
Very nice guy, he's gonna be a good asset to the smart community policing because he's really, he's what we're looking for, so. Uh, both Tahos are all fitted along with the pickup truck, uh, we'll be getting them in service here shortly, we're waiting on a couple cars or something, something for our, uh, computers, so I'm not, I'm not fully up on that, but Tom and, and, uh, Tom is working on that. As soon as we get that, we're gonna get them in service, get them rolling down the highway. Um, chat with a hero was very successful. Walmart, we had like a hundred and thirty-one kids, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, and then, uh, right after that Monday, the following Monday, we did a quick one with Myers, and we had twenty-five kids and old fifteen kids from Ross Common, and another ten from Ogumal, we put them together, we had Ross Common reps come over and, uh, their people, their law enforcement came over and helped themselves, so that, that was pretty nice, too. Nice to give back to our community. Um, I wanna thank Commissioner Newbecker, Commissioner Sherbrooke, Commissioner Vaughn, for your service to our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will be missed. And, uh, Merry Christmas song. That's all I have.
Oh, tell us about this. What's the term, collar? Well, arrest today, I saw a picture of you arresting.
Oh.
Somebody today.
Oh, you did see that.
Was that yesterday?
That was yesterday.
I don't thi- I, I never seen it, I never seen it posted yet, so.
Oh, no, I got the, I got the information, oh, yes, so what happened there?
Brad stopped the individual, uh, Mr. Grinch from, uh, wheeling out a cart.
Starting to steal Christmas.
Yeah, and he was arrested and put in a patrol car.
Did he attempt to also steal Commissioner Newbecker's telephone?
Yes.
Yes, he did, I heard that.
I didn't hear all that.
I, I understand there was actually photographic evidence of the.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Best, oh, yeah.
I get a tip from, uh, Deputy Better on that one.
Did you? Yes, that was fun, that was great. Yeah, we, we was thinking about that last week, how can we do, we gotta do something, just kind of.
We gonna see that on the paper?
Good.
Jocelyn, we gonna see that in the paper?
Should get a hold of me next week.
Okay, get all the sheriff's.
Thank you.
I got pictures.
Man, that's fun, that was great, always fun, so. We love giving back to our community, but that supports us all, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas. Sheriff, do you know how many of the sheriff's officers rang the bell yesterday at Walmart was?
How many have it?
How many, how many employees of the sheriff's office?
Uh, let me see, two.
Just curious.
Six.
I know he had quite a few, so.
I had eight plus. My wife, she helped me out, I, I did segment, uh, eleven at noon, and then I came back at four or five, and Deb, she helped me out, so.
Great.
I love doing that, I lo- I love, well, I'm, I'm a jawjacker, I love talking, so it was fun, it was a good time.
The Grinch was very popular, too.
Yes.
Everybody wanted.
Well, we had a family come back, it, it was at, at Walmart, went home, got her child and came back for a pitcher, but he was, he left, you know?
He's got a rose.
Got home, got in jail.
Get to jail.
It was fun, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe next year we'll have a cell out there in the parking lot, you can put them right in it, you know?
Car corral, just return it, one of the car corrals into a jail cell.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other department heads?
Yeah. Uh, just to let everyone know, we're just about complete with our end of the year reports, we sent in the state with all of our studies, and so we'll be able to submit them next week, I've got them. They're, they're in a state portal now, I just wanna review everything, and we can send them in next week, so everything's going pretty well, and yeah, I came, now I wanna thank Commissioner Vaughn, Newbecker, and Sherbrooke for serving on the commission the last couple of years, and it's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you. And then see if there's any questions, I haven't been to a meeting in a month or two, so you guys have any questions for me?
I don't have a question for you, Randy, but, then was there any movement on the vehicle for equalization, folks? Since Ford canceled that order, or?
Not that's been reported back to me.
Okay. You heard any?
These guys need a vehicle badly.
Uh, you know, Brian was handling it through the building department, and then with Tim, and I got the email, the, the copy of the paper, the Ford had canceled the order.
Yeah, okay.
We and our townships looking at buying a vehicle, and to be honest, we just, uh, get a bid on the, the exact truck, we can go to the Ford dealer and buy the same truck for a thousand dollars more than we get it through my deal, my deals changed the pricing from last year, it's substantially higher than it was, so the savings not as good as it was, so might be something.
Do they add to them?
Uh, you know, I, one of the trustees of my board has.
Could offer a thousand.
Brandon actually owns the dealer she's working with, so, uh, she's been emailing and taking care of that, she just sent me some emails today, and we were looking at these trucks through the building department, I think they were forty thousand about, maybe forty.
I think they're in the thirties, uh, because they're, I wanna say sixty-seven must the price, total price for two of them.
Yeah, so it was like thirty-six, uh, we're looking at fifty-one thousand for three-quarter ton, because we're using it for plowing and maintenance vehicles, so.
Oh, okay.
It, it's could certainly higher, but my deal raised the prices fifty thousand through my deal.
But that's a lot more.
In our fifty-one. But it's, the, the three-quarter ton was only a couple thousand dollars more than my deal before, it still would have been less than forty thousand, so it's, they've gone up significantly, significantly even in the state program. We'll, uh, have to work on it as far as priority department, we really start using the vehicles in April, so we'll, we've got some time, Ryan, I don't know that he's no busy in the winter doing inspections either, so. Hopefully we'll have something in place before spring.
Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And Mike Bowers.
And lady. Lady, I did hear that.
Uh, Mike Bowers, you're, are you on still?
Uh, yeah, I'm still here, um, I'm really just, uh, trying to keep up with things that are going on in the county, but I do, uh, uh, wanna let you all know that, uh, we do have three warming centers prepared to be opened up. Uh, one at, uh, Horton Township Hall. Um, one at the Common Township Hall, and then down in Skidway Lake, the Faith Lutheran Church. So, and our search team is also, uh, prepared to, uh, to assist in manning those stations if they're needed. And all of this is registered with two-on-one. Uh, so, uh, two-on-one and I are in constant contact with each other to, uh, determine whether or not to open any of these warming stations.
That's, that's great news, thank you for that. Anything else, Mike?
No, sir, um, like I said, I'm mostly just listening in so I can keep up on current events with the county a little bit better than the sheriff.
All right, any, any other questions for Mike, or? Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else on there, is there?
Sorry.
Oh. Um, matters from the floor?
None.
Nothing? Movements for adoption?
Uh, great.
Nothing, Craig?
Nothing.
Okay. Uh, committee reports, uh, Mark, you wanna start?
Sure, I'll start. I attended the DHHS, and I appreciate the board voting to roll that money over into the one for, like I said, and as I said, to commit a law. They watched that fund very carefully, and I don't really know, as people are really, they truly deserve it, they exhausted everything else, and so I appreciate that. Um, kind of West Branch Township, West Branch Township is excited about getting the complex, the rec, um, Ogumal Hills, what is it, Ogumal Hills Recreation, whatever, Field of Dreams area. Um, really excited about that. Uh, we had EMS. Commissioner Vaughn and I, uh, District Health, the RSV of, uh, is, according to our medical director is plaque-hoey, and that's one of those, and I think I may have had it. It presents an adult with a common cold sort of thing, but it's really detrimental to children five years younger and elderly, they have compromised immune systems. Um, other than that, that was pretty much district health is pretty much standard business. Um, and the West Branch City, the city of West Branch, got their two-point-six million dollar grant for lead line replacement, it's been inked, so city will be, they've already started replacing lead service lines and stuff, but they officially got their two-point-six million dollars from the state. And I tend to clacking township, no finish business as usual, clacking. That was it.
Chris for Scott?
Um, Airport Board, you're all there, Airport Board, did you wanna talk about that?
Doesn't matter.
Now, we're renewing contract now, we have a new contract with our, our, uh, manager. And, uh, and now be paid through the county. And so we have an agreement with the Airport Board and the city on that deal. Um, what else?
Solar, solar project.
The solar project is still being looked at from the engineers and things like that. There was a, a little review over twenty-twenty-two, they even showed us some, some pictures of the planes that had been coming in during the year, the, the jets, I was really surprised to.
The Nekkar Bakian fighter jet.
Oh, yeah, the checklist of Bakin fighter jets, they, they were pretty sharp looking things, too, yeah. Uh, I went to the road commission meetings, couple of meetings. Um, the, uh, last month had bids taken in on, uh, tree cutting forty acres up off of Berry Road where they, they, uh, gravel out. And they, they had four different bids from loggers, and they, uh, they had an assistance with, uh, uh, Todd Johnson, the forester, and they took the highest bid. And then this month, they found out from the state of Michigan, that the state of Michigan owns the mineral rights underneath the woods on, on the hill, and the state of Michigan wants rail these from all the gravel at one rate, and all the another rate for the sand clay, so they're gonna see if that's negotiable, and then one suggestion was made was it possible for them to buy the mineral rights from the state, one fellow in the audience said that he had done it in the past, and they were gonna look into that. So, yeah, it was, uh, here they thought they were ma- getting a good deal, getting some money off the trees, and, and, uh, then the state comes along, says they like had that money in different way, you know? Gee whiz. So, yeah, they went over, uh, they talked about this weekend, they're, they're, they're scheduling all their drivers to come in on Saturday in case, so, um, we'll if, if, if the snow comes like predicted, then they'll be out moving. Um, they set their administration employee, um, uh, uh, it's not really contracts, but they, uh, they, they set the, uh, wages and everything for their administrative people at the meeting. And, uh, so, yeah, that, that's pretty much with that. Um, and then Ogumal Township, I was at that meeting last night, and uh, the city, the city project off M thirty is going now, the, the infrastructure is starting to go, and then talked about, uh, the possible of connecting the township water system in with the city water system. So it could be shared if needed be, or or could be, uh, used in, in case we had to shut down, or, or in turn, they had to shut down, you know? So, uh, a lot of talk about that, and then sewer rates, too, they've, uh, been the same for years, and and they're looking at, uh, raising the sewer rates. Um, I think that's all.
You were West Branch City with me, too.
Oh, yeah, I went to West Branch City with Mark, but he did all the talking.
Shock.
Shock.
Um, well, I was at, uh, the airport meeting with Craig, and, um, I think the only thing, the only thing I. Um, well, I was at, uh, the airport meeting with Craig and, um, I think the only thing, the only thing I.
And Brett.
Oh, and Brett too, yes, that's correct.
Him as well?
No.
No.
Okay. We're the three people, but we're the three persons on the board, so I just want.
Them so it's an occasional.
Yeah, so Brad is just.
I'm sorry.
Include Brett, you know.
To include me on that, it's okay.
So I think the only thing I can think of that we didn't talk about yet is, uh, fuel sales are up thirty-three percent. Um, was that thirty thousand or thirty?
Yeah.
Something like that. Um, so that's very encouraging. A lot of, uh, a lot of neat planes coming in. Um, I was especially, uh, I guess, uh, entertained by the hunters, uh, coming in with their, uh, their jets.
Yeah.
Just to hunt in Michigan.
Just off Michigan, yeah.
From Colorado to Michigan, which is.
Yeah.
Yeah, our people are going to Colorado and their people are pioneers in their own, in their own private jets.
It's an expensive hunting trip, that's all I can say. Um, and then I also attended West Branch Township DDA. And again, you know, we, one of the topics was the, uh, recreation area purchase. Um, as well as, uh, have you got a date of the twenty-eighth of this month for the woods, uh, the marijuana dispensary will be opening up. And then I still did not get a date on Starbucks.
It's township meeting. Jeremy said he didn't have a definite date either.
No, that's what he, that's what he said at the DDA meeting too. Um, can't really think of anything else. Uh, we went over overall plan. That was about it, I think. Um, and that's all I had this week.
Well, um, let's see. I, I had a lot of meetings. Uh, Parks and Rec met. Uh, I think the thing that we talked about there was the, um, contract for the, which we just approved tonight with a new, um, caretakers, whatnot. Um, so that's at, um, nine-one-one, we met there. Um, business as usual. They got a new door system there. Um, they used to have a passcode, punch in the number and you could get in. No longer have that. Now you push a button and it rings right at the stations where they're, the operators are sitting and they can open the doors on the back doors and the front doors. So, um, it's more secure, so a better system for them. So that, uh, was with Mark, I say at District Health, um, business pretty well as usual. Um, see Cummings, Cummings Township, pretty well business as usual. Hill Township, it was a real short meeting, like fifteen minutes. We were out of there. Um, Rose, Rose Township, so pretty quick meeting. Um, City Rose City, they're talking about, um, they're trying to get a grant for, uh, putting a campground in, um, kinda behind the fire station off there where there's, uh, some, um, mobile homes. They're trying to get all those mobile homes eliminated out there and put a campground in there. So they're, uh, they're working on that. Um, and then the last one was Good Art Township and, um, really very impressed. Uh, I think they had four, um, four years of meetings, all in one meeting. The meetings are about fifteen minutes out there and we were in there for about an hour and a half. Uh, they, uh, the new chief out there, new fire chief out there, he contacted somebody down below and they've given, pick up loads of toys and coats and stuff for the public and they're distributing and, uh, just doing one heck of a good job. And they're putting together, uh, some blueprints and whatnot. Uh, sounds like they wanna do an addition on to the fire hall up there. Uh, maybe put three bays in up there. And so they're working on that. So, um, they were, uh, going ahead with that, but, um, I think that's all that I made.
All right. And then I, um, I forgot about Brett.
And then we forgot about Brett. I'm good.
Good?
I'm good.
Really? All the things happen in your office and you're good? Next.
Next.
Okay. All right. Well, uh, we're on to general public, uh, public comment, uh, on any, any agenda.
I got a public comment.
All right.
Excuse me, sir.
That's a public comment.
We stand at the podium and address the three outgoing commissioners. On behalf of the entire county employees, we all pitched in and we all got you personalized gifts to thank you for all of your service, for all of your hard work, your dedication, your, um, digging into things, your knowledge, everything. Not everybody side-eye all the time, but we all, at the end of the day, professional came together and everybody appreciate you guys and we wish you luck. So we all got personalized gifts from us. Make sure you. Read them.
Mine ticking.
And I want the bags back. If you don't want them, I'm a mom and save the bags. It's just the box.
Got a gift bat, windshines?
Very nice.
That nice?
That's my handwriting on the back.
Thank you very much. Pretty much appreciate it. Thank everybody. That's what I want to be around.
Very much appreciated.
Well, that's why it says. See you around. No, yours says see you around.
Says see me around, you will. Like your mates do when you come in in the morning.
We're just gonna make you start putting on the coffee. So thank you guys from everybody in the county.
Brett, thank you, Brett.
There you go.
To, uh, that way you can re-give. It's a recycle, recycle, excuse me.
What we do.
Yep. My wife saves all the boxes and all that stuff. If they're not tore up, the next year shirts and stuff, yeah, so.
That's why I never sign a card, so, so somebody can use it again.
He's always thinking of everybody else.
Yes.
Yeah, that's it. Of course, it was an anniversary card I marked out and put birthday on, you know? It was on sale, you know?
Well, all right, uh, thank you to everyone that works for the county. It was a pleasure, uh, serving and, uh, Merry Christmas and happy, happy holidays.
And. Hey, Mo. I was gonna say we officially just hit blizzard status.
All right. So we have an adjournment?
Support.
That's you.
The last two things.
And this is crazy enough, the last board commissioners meeting, we got done with it six oh eight.
It's the same time?
Same exact time.
It's just like, I haven't heard a vote yet.
Well, hurry up, guys. Let's go.
Hi.
Hi.
Craig?
No.
So really don't matter.
Right, I don't mean to be rude, but I'm gonna bail.